Now, everybody, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Portobello City Council to order. Please join me in practical interest. You can call please.
Councilmember Morton.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Piler.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Mayor, uh, Phil Powers. And was that Mayor Pro Tem Morton? Mayor Pro Tem Morton, I have no sir.
Let me write on through. Item two, public comment. This is the portion of our agenda where people in the public are part of a winning subject that is not on tonight's agenda. Uh, do I hear or see anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Let's see, no one. Uh, we'll go on to three city communications. First up, the news. City Council Communications, um, and reports. Let's start, um, with Mr. Piler.
So I, the only thing I got to report, thanks. I was able to attend the event, the bike race event. Uh, and I guess I want to share. I just thought it was an awesome event, you guys. Um, and even to the couple of things I wanted to share. I was here Sunday and helped the fire department do pancake breakfast and and to see all those guys. How many people went the hundred miles was amazing to me, you know, it'd still be in a get up and come get pancakes. But, but one thing I wanted to share too, I, I know that there's people that bring up railroad days and they bring up all this other stuff, but I met with Todd Sunday and we looked at the park. Whether people know this or not, that park was clean. The trash was picked up. It, it, uh, I, I just wanted to share that because when we look at events that we have, a lot of the work that Todd and his crew put into having it cleaned up. Um, and I commend Los Sierra for, for having the event and taking care of our park and taking care of the city. So, best of.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Murphy.
Uh, the only thing I have to report is exactly, I agree with Stan. I was down here on Saturday and Sunday. Um, watched the, like, a number of people that went the hundred miles, they came right up, uh, West Street, uh, but, uh, there was, it's certainly a different type of event than railroad days, but there was opportunity for local people to, to come down and participate in it. Uh, Danny Horton was often on, on the stage, a local guy and, uh, yeah, I think will the cities probably be willing to consider any type of event like that that comes up, whether it be railroad days or or the, uh, well, Sierra bike.
Good. Yeah. Um, I didn't attend anything and I don't have anything to report. Okay? No. Got to write down, I did. Uh, I did go to, uh, LACCO meeting on Monday and, um, LES G meeting this morning. Now, two things to report. LES G, the, uh, tax sharing agreement resolution for the new district is going before the Board of Supervisors meeting on June 20th for approval after the noise. Which we hope, and then I also have a Beckworth Fire Department report for last month. There were thirty calls total and, uh, seven of those calls were for Beckworth and twenty-three of those calls were for Portola. There was twelve medical aid, four lift assist, four mutual aid, one smoke check, one pro-aid check and one burn. And that's it. Okay, thank you. I have that though. Um, this, this, this was.
And I had just got the hearing side two, enjoyed the bike race, but maybe it was the best one yet. Uh, it was very flawless and started way to run. Um, wanted to hear from Todd and and his crew and, uh, he told the rent, but, uh, it went nicely and the weather could not have been better for residents and the rest of us. Um, I attended the transportation commission meeting, um, and LACCO meeting. And we have lots of interesting discussion about LACCO, about some of our neighboring districts as well as, um, the West G uh, delay. It was to be ratified yesterday and we have, you know, money, we have to wait until the uh, special move at the end of the month. So supervisors have this to be ratified. And that's about all I have to report. So, um, let's hear from Eric Cloddy.
Um, Karen, Nikki with the equality district. Um, just wanted to provide a few numbers just in the last morning. Um, we've approved nine applications, have paid out for seventeen installations, um, to be the removal of an old non-certified device, um, that has equated to nine wood stoves, four electric pump, two pellet stoves, one carousel and one propane stove. And granted, this is for the entire zone one and two area, which does include three people. Um, and to date, we have, um, fifty-one thousand dollars, seven hundred and thirty-seven left in our twenty-fifteen targeted airside grants, very first one that was started here in twenty sixteen. So, um, we are expected to wrap that up by the end of the year, which is pretty exciting. Um, due to the pandemic, we've had extensions on that grant, so we're going to wrap it up. In our twenty-eighteen grant, we have two point seven nine seven million left and in our twenty-twenty, it's two point six three. Um, and this is all going towards different efforts to change out woodstoves and the supporting programs around that. Um, other interesting numbers were the total change outs for the year of the last three years. So in twenty-twenty, we changed out fifty-five old devices, seventy-six in twenty-twenty-one and then fifty-five again in twenty-twenty. That's all I really have.
Thank you. Uh, Sheriff's Department. Report tonight.
You have anything to report, Sean?
Um, I can speak to the, the gravel grinder. Definitely nothing but positive comments from my contacts with other local citizens. From the sheriff's office viewpoint, it went off very, very well. We didn't have a lot of problems as we have in previous years, uh, bikes coming up missing. Um, oddities. So that was very well received and we appreciate you guys putting on and bringing people to the community. A lot of, lots of contacts with people that, uh, from out of the area. They were real happy with the city, real happy with the community. So that was real nice. We didn't have, to my knowledge, we didn't have any negative contacts between the citizens and Portola, the outlawing areas and the visitors to our city. And as far as sheriff's office business, public medical aids, we're obviously starting to see that the tour season comes to fruition. A lot of travelers coming through. Um, we talked a couple of our deputies back out into the patrol sector from jail, put our jail back on twelve-hour shifts. Uh, working a little bit mandatory overtime. We'll be writing that schedule, uh, through some months. Just to be able to put more of a control presence, help to the community. You're getting any questions for me? I'm sorry I'm not here for them, but fourteen hours out today, I'm burned up.
That's enough.
That's understandable.
It's enough today.
Undercover.
Incomprehensibly, still bothering me.
Oh, thanks, man. Uh, item four is consent agenda.
Want to city manager report or not?
Okay, I, oh, I guess why you.
I got nothing to report. No, I'm just, uh, just a little bit.
Sorry.
The pool is now open. We changed a few things this year. We did some scheduling changes. We shifted staff, uh, basically the, the lifeguards, uh, some of the seasoned lifeguards, one in particular is is sort of manage it and charge, but we are lucky enough to have a, a community member who kind of volunteered to to help spearhead things. She might be in this audience right now. Um, Lindsay, she's, she's, she's helping the, uh, she's helping build, uh, build skills with the current lifeguards on how to manage appropriately a business like that. So it's, it's working out actually pretty good this year. Um, the, the joke, the swim lessons were, were not going to be starting those until July instead of trying to do it all the first week of opening, because there's opening pains that go along with. Uh, we allowed the swim team this year to actually do the concessions for a fundraiser for themselves. So that's a good thing for the city. We don't have to worry about counting, um, ice cream and, and candy bars and it's a good thing for the swim team too, so they can raise some funds for, for their team. Uh, the bike race, we were talking a little bit about the bike race. We just got a message today and they're, they're thinking, well, I, I think they aren't thinking about it. They chose to do it a week later this next season, June fifteenth. So I don't think that's going to affect much of anything on our end, but it might just be hotter or it might be snowy, who knows?
Right.
Um, that's it for me. We still have a lot of water leaks. Do you have any specific questions regarding water leaks? Your public works director is here today.
Are we going to write a map about that, you know, a little thing?
It actually wouldn't be a bad idea now. It, it would be fun to watch.
And if you change, you already know.
Yeah, you know, the bigger the dock, the bigger the leak.
Yeah.
So, so I actually talk, talk about the water leak a little bit. We, we have this monthly check-in with the state regarding that huge grant that started cheaply state and with the, uh, with the, uh, sewer and water. Hopefully new construction one of these days, we're in the planning process, but the, the conversation transitioned into the issues we're having with water leaks right now. And I'm sort of crossing my fingers, but, but the, the, uh, the emergency part of that aspect has sort of ramped up and we're hoping to maybe get some addition up because, because we're to the point right now that we, we probably should be hiring some outside agencies that are capable of working with delicate infrastructure like our guys are. So it's a tough one to do, but, but we, we can't handle all the water leaks. But, and even with, even with the help on Facebook, we, we just can't do it. So, so we're hoping that we get a little state help. We're hoping that, that maybe we can hire out some contractors to help fix some leaks, but you know, it's like when you remodel a house, you don't really want to peel off that one corner because then there's dry rot and then you find it throughout the whole house. It's, we're being very, um, careful about what we're peeling off when we start fixing water leaks. So.
I'm telling you about railroad breaks. Uh, you might just mention to them to watch for the graduation, high school graduation day. I would really hate to see both graduation and the
Well, I, I thought of that exactly when they wrote it. I started thinking of the date. I was looking at the calendar and that, that could be an issue.
Yeah, because it was last Friday.
Yeah, and, and next year will be the same.
Good point, Joe.
Okay, now that's it.
All right, thank you. Uh, now as the council agenda, these items are usual, we have a non-controversial and our voting on that same time, but if anyone has something to, uh, merge, we'll open it to the public first. And then any council member, if you want something pulled off of your consent agenda, you may do so at this time. And if not, I will retain the motion. But if anyone in the audience has anything on the consent they wish to address. Are you hearing none, councilmembers?
I made a motion to adopt the current consent calendar. The resolution number. The resolution number, sorry. It's my first number. Thank you. I have seven.
Go ahead a second. One second, Pat. If you have a motion in a second, uh, roll call please.
Um, councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Piler.
Yeah.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Morton.
Yes.
Mayor Powers.
Yes. Item five, renew state of emergency proclamation. Uh, review and continue the local emergency proclaimed by the management of the city of Portola on March eighth, under the one three.
So basically the same thing we did last time. This is, uh, we have to renew it every sixty days. It, our meetings don't coincide specific, not right at sixty days. So we want to stay ahead of it and approve it before the sixty-day lapse. Uh, so this is the emergency proclamation that we declared of, along with the county regarding the storm. So we just have to acknowledge that we're, that we're, uh, renewing that proclamation.
John, I have a question. Do we have to renew that every thirty days until all of the emergency repairs are done with the water system? Be able to qualify for monies through the state?
We have to, we have to renew it every sixty days until we declare that the emergency is over. And, and it could, like, like the county has emergency declaration right now from the Dixie Fire.
Okay.
So they have been renewing that since twenty-twenty-one and, and just sort of renewed it last meeting as well. Uh, so it, who knows where it's going to end, but it's when, I guess it's when we all decide that there's either no funding and there's no, there's no resource or there are no resources available. I think last time you guys did one, there, there was a, there was a decision by OES, they funded a certain amount and probably ended kind of after that. So it could go on for a while.
It's a matter of having our hand in the pot.
Yeah.
I didn't, uh, settle why we would maintain a motion. Well, I'm making a motion to, um, continue the local emergency proclamation for the city of Portola. Yes. Oops.
Both side here.
Have a motion in second, all of them. Five. opposed, hearing none so fast. Item six, contract twenty-two, Portola Stip, which is state transportation improvement project funds. Um, health.
Yes.
North group phase one progress payment number one. And our city engineer inevitable new.
He's here, he's here. So, so the next, the next two items, our city engineer Dan Bastian will participate. This first one is, is sort of an easy one. Um, it's a progress payment that somehow I missed in my email should have been done, uh, in May. But, uh, this is a progress repayment for the work that Q and D has been doing. Um, so we want to, of course, get that paid. And if there's some additional information that Dan wants to share regarding this item, or if you have questions, ask that guy.
Mr. Bastian, go ahead a bit.
No, you're good.
We can probably carry that unless you want us to over there, do a little dance.
So, uh, I'd like to just take a second and give you a project status while, while I'm here, since I don't get a chance to do that often. It's something that I've been talking to Todd quite a bit about and I send John a lot of emails. But you know how that goes. Sometimes you can't get, I'm hoping that he just knows kind of what's going on, but we're at the point now where the fireworks will be starting pretty soon. Tomorrow morning, a big machine will show up and it'll start over rising the road. Uh, we've, this progress payment basically is for puddle. Yeah, we smile. We're talking about water leaks, although we have a twelve-inch water main in that road and we have a six-inch water main in that road. Not worried so much about the twelve-inch, but the six is asbestos in there. It's a little more fragile. So what we did is, uh, this progress payment that you're considering tonight, we did about thirty-two potholes where we went in and, and located where all the infrastructure was so that we would assure ourselves that we'll be above them and we won't actually grind into them when we do that work. So that, that's what this pay request is for. It was a bid item. Includes some MOB and DMOB as well, so, um, we're probably two months past that now, but we've, we've been in winter suspension. So we've really only been at it for about a week. I have talked, I think, to everybody on the street, anybody I can see that I think has an interest in what's going on to explain to them what's going on. Have gotten, uh, no negative response from people that live on the street or anybody else for that matter, other than what I've seen, uh, come, come to me from John. Uh, which occasionally that kind of stuff happens, but we, we do, uh, we have been trying very hard to let everybody know what's going on that, uh, will be affected, especially their driveways. If you recall, this is a complete rehabilitation of the road. Concrete curb gutter and sidewalk on both sides. And so we'll have a, um, access disability ramps at each of the corners so that, uh, you know, we can get up and down off the sidewalks for, for that. So if the project, uh, time is a hundred and twenty days, we're now into a, a couple of weeks. So we'll probably be, I think the bulk of it will be done mostly by the end of September is where we're at.
And state project, bicycle lane.
Bicycle lanes on both sides as well. It's just that, so if you're familiar with Joy Way, it's, it's really quite wide. So the design actually fold, fold sidewalks in so that we didn't affect people too much. And we left two twelve-foot lanes and, and, uh, minimum bicycle lanes on each side. So that'll be delineated by striping.
The people that they will be able to park of joy.
Uh, that came up during consideration of the adoption of the plans and specs. And I, I think Pat may, maybe asked that question. Somebody did. And so the answer was yes. They, they, they may not know it at this point, but that's the way the project is set up. In my experience, I've been out there quite a bit. There's not a lot of cars that I can't think of, only one where they park on the road occasionally, but for the most part, it's off-street parking. So there's probably at least one person that may be affected, but they have adequate onsite parking.
How does this go to affect people that use Baldwin Park? And park there.
So we close the roads to local or to, uh, non-local traffic, but the intent is they'll have twenty-four or seven access to their property, obviously, except for when we're dealing with their driveways.
I'm, I'm talking about after the project is done and they're, and it's all bicycle lanes. Because a lot of people use Baldwin.
There's no parking.
No, no, right. I drove that, brought that up a couple of months ago. Talking about it, but it was already approved and you can't go in and change it.
Baldwin Park at my, the project starts at West Street and ends at that postal cluster box. So I'm, I end right at the middle of Baldwin Park.
Yeah.
So I did, I didn't carry it past the Baldwin Park area. Uh, the way this works is the state allocates money to Plumas County. And Plumas County then will, because we're the only incorporated that city in Plumas County, we've asked for a share of that money and they, uh, have provided to, to us over the years a certain amount that we allocate. So this project was crafted for the money that they would allocate to us.
So I'm going to ask Todd this question and at the end of the project, and there won't be any more street parking in front of the playground area or on Baldwin Park where people use it for birthday parties. Is there a possibility that the city could expand what little bit of parking that is already there for handicap and make it for people as well?
We could, we could, we could figure something out.
Okay, who's part of that? Well, we'll be like, on that, it was part of that.
Hmm.
On Deppard Street as well. That way.
Yeah, we could, we could figure something out. We'll figure it out. Yeah, nobody know.
It was a damn, what do you need to mass?
Yeah, the action item is to consider and approve, uh, progress payment number one. Um, and the agenda package is the details of my transmail.
Uh, public comment on the sighting. You want to, it's seeing that? Uh, when you give the motion?
I made a motion to submit, uh, payment number one to Q and D construction for the work completed to date effective May fifteen, twenty twenty-three. Um, in the amount of seventy-five thousand, uh, one seven seven over.
A second now. Yeah, the motion is second. Roll call please.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Piler.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Morton.
Yes.
Mayor Powers.
Yes. So carry, thank you. Item number seven, resolution two five four eight, resolution in the city council of the city of Portola adopting the risk of projects for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash two four funded by S B Y.
Might as well go right to Dan.
Okay, uh, the resolution indicates this Senate Bill one and it's part of this Road Repair Accountability Act in point seventeen. They require, uh, transparency and, and how the dollars are spent, they're allocated to local agencies and this is part of that process. The city has to adopt the resolution. It has to specify where the money's going to be spent. Uh, that was, uh, in this case, uh, uh, a discussion with city staff to determine where the money could be spent, was crafted so that we could use it pretty much anywhere in town that we would like to. It's not a ton, ton of money. But it's enough to, to get a little bit of bottles, works, men and, and such. So, um, this resolution is part of that process. I take it, I upload it to the portal, I do a bunch of other uh, stuff that they want included. Then they give me the check and they say, you're good to go and the city will get the money. That's how it works.
Okay. Any public comment? Anyone wishing for us to read it?
Well, I'd like to, I'm sorry I haven't been here for the other meeting. So it's through the year of twenty thirty-four. It's, um, eleven years of funding is out of this.
No.
That's a typo.
Okay.
Good caption.
Well, I thought, yeah, for us. Well, if there's a funding, something.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Well, eighty-four, that's what he says.
There probably still will be some projects through thirty-four, but it won't be regarding this resolution. We move slow, but.
That, and it's just.
Yep.
Nice, nice work.
Thanks, man. I don't see anybody wishing to have me with it. Well, it's going to have pardon actually, but I don't see anybody wanting that. Um, so I will retain a motion for this resolution. Can you go for it?
I will, um, make a motion to approve resolution number one five forty-eight.
I would say.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Piler.
Yeah.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Morton.
Yes.
Mayor Powers.
Yes.
And, uh, let's double check, make your notes on the resolution too, because I need your copy and paste it. So I want to, well, it's okay. We'll just make sure it's, it doesn't need to be corrected on the resolution. If, if it was on the resolution, we get to blame Dan because we copied and pasted, but, but at first glance, I think it's our fault.
Yeah, I think it's your fault.
Because the resolution starts twenty-three.
Hey, we determined it's our fault. For the resolution.
We're teaming him.
And Wayne Dan.
Item eight, public hearing, one two ninety-three, one twenty-four, uh, proposed ultimately the budget. Speaking wants to actually, let's start with Susan.
Yeah, I'll get Susan to unmute.
Good evening. Uh, this is an opportunity for the public, uh, public hearing, which, um, is why don't you let me explain a few things and then call for the public hearing, okay?
Yeah.
All right. So this is essentially the budget that you saw when we did the workshop. Uh, the updates that, um, we talked about at the time that we knew we didn't have all the information for were, was the insurance increase. Uh, I was waiting for some information on the INCODE annual fees. Um, all the approved items from the add-on list were moved to the budget. Uh, except that there still, um, isn't a Joy Way amount and Todd can speak to that in just a minute. Uh, I did increase some revenues and snow removal based on the current year expenses because we get half of that back minus the first five thousand dollars. And in the solid waste franchise fees, I increased the revenue there a little bit. In water, um, we added a line locator and a trencher in water fun. And then we moved the. In water fund, and then we moved the cola from the um workshop budget to this budget. I don't know if anyone has any other direction on anything, but I thought maybe we could have one of the LAFCO members to explain to us what um. That will probably be looking for some additional LAFCO money, whether it's added in right now or later.
Eighty thousand dollars to for buy out of hers. Lap was gonna pay forty thousand, that's crazy, and it leaves, they're gonna have to buy in the fourth hole and they can't.
So almost, so almost twenty thousand dollars. Will come from the city to do that buyout, and in the county, they probably still need to approve it too, but.
Then they'll put in the other one. So that phone will pay forty of the haybee and.
So this information for the public, anyone that's probably listening, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, this was an. An action yesterday that occurred at the LAFCO meeting, correct, or Monday, excuse me. So this is new information that is gonna have to be added to our budget that we didn't know about in our budget discussions before. But we're, we're basically, we're we're paying off and unfunded. Liability and we won't have that expense in the future theoretically.
Right. We're hoping, we're hoping.
So from the my budget perspective, if we can get a dollar amount to put in here. Before adoption on the twenty-eighth, that would be my preference, there's nothing I. Um love more than having to do a budget amendment on the first meeting in July. So uh. I don't know if that's something that has that exact dollar amounts been decided. I'll take that as a no.
I think they were just kind of approximate, but it was eighteen thousand or some dollars, I think.
Be before we um, we'll get through this, and I will try to get an answer while we're here. Hopefully so.
Uh and what was the dollar amount of the budget that was approved? Didn't you just approve your budget on Monday?
Yes, they did, um I'm sorry, I didn't bring that, didn't bring my book, I didn't bring my LAFCO book. My notes do not carry out any issues.
Okay, uh so when we get the updated LAFCO information, if it's okay with the council, will include um. A budgeted figure that LAFCO just approved and um whatever the dollar amount is uh for this. Um I also wanted to mention that uh to the public that there's no water and sewer rate increases in this budget. And there is a one dollar decrease in. Um landfill closure, so uh. Maybe time to open the public hearing?
Yes. I'll open the public hearing on this item, uh uh city budget. Anyone in the audience wishing to comment. On where we are and. I was thinking of this, we had to pay so much LAFCO, but so it goes. Did I say that?
So did you just open the public hearing, is that what I heard, okay?
I'm not seeing any. I will close the public hearing. And.
So there's um with the exception of the adding the LAFCO, there's. Uh not really any direction we're looking for tonight. Um although I understand that one of the coun- um council member Turner would like to talk about the dog park tonight.
Thank you, Susan, um I'm still interested in looking into using the um. Funding from, remind me, Susan, what it's called? To look into putting a dog park in, and I know Mr. Murphy had suggested maybe putting it somewhere. On highway seventy so it'd be accessible for her passing through to use if they needed to take a break and let their dogs run. Um I don't know how big the area is there at West End Park, we could put one, how far we can go into where the. All muster cabins used to be, but I think I'd like to meet with Todd and discuss that. And see if we can come up with an area that we could use there. Because that would be an area if somebody would start pulling an R V that they could pull over and stop. Run over to Dollar General and let their dog run, so.
Are you looking forward? A place where people can just go and have their dog on leash, or do you want to stand stand?
No, I want to stand stand, I want to go there and go away, no, not leave them there and go away, they have to stay with their dog. They go over to Dollar General and not be staying, well.
So as far as this budget's concerned, uh we don't necessarily need a decision from the council, sounds like there's some footwork to be done. But the ARPA funds uh we can come back to, we have not committed them all. And we can certainly come back to those at any time.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome, um Todd, did you wanna touch on Joy Way and? Uh the addition of the line locator and the trencher, please?
Sure, so uh Joy Way, we have a Joy Way ball up there, we did not get a chance to. Retrofitted the power upgrades and the skate upgrades this year due to like maybe a little bit of snow. And so we're hoping that we can get that done, we're also. Um at the mercy of Sierra Controls, who seems to be rather busy. With everything else and. Um hopefully we can get that done this year, the line, the line locator. Uh we have a a line locator that you attach to the metal pipes. We can follow them out through the street, mark where the line is, that line locator has uh ceased to work, so we need a new line locator. Uh we're also running into so many. Pipes that are. I mean, they're just at the point of have they have need to be replaced, we're no longer able to Band-Aid some of these pipes. So we're looking at a trencher, we rented one, it's working really good so far, as far as being able to trench the lines, a new line in. Instead of take tobacco in there, dig up, you know, eighteen inch worth of asphalt and everything else, so that's why we have some add-ons on here.
Can I ask a question, Todd, about the project, are we replacing the. Infrastr- infrastructure of the water sewer during this project like you did on some of the other?
Which project, a joy way?
On Joy Way?
No, we're waiting for the pressure to crush the lines and then we'll replace.
I didn't know if that, if the infrastructure underneath that area was being.
Dan's not here right now, but I'll I'll kind of. Go into a little bit, the state won't pay for the infrastructure until something happens to it.
Okay.
So that's why we're pulverizing the road and not touching it. For about six weeks to eight weeks, let it sit, make sure we don't have any leaks, make sure there's no damage. Then, you know, and if there is, then we can, we can get the state to pay for that on part of the state money, but it won't cover it. Until something like that happens. So that's why we'll pulverize the road, let it sit, wait for the leaks, and go from there.
Do we have any current leaks right now on Joy Way?
That we know about?
That we know about.
No, thank you. Tomorrow, let you know tomorrow.
Thanks, thanks, Todd, um I have failed to mention that we also included three thousand dollar for council chambers technology. I did spend some time going through the ARPA rules, and I do think that. Uh this kind of uh ability to reach more of the public um can very easily fit under ARPA, so even though that. Three thousand dollars right now uh is included in the um city budget, I I think that we could talk about. Um using ARPA funds for that. Um you know, am I happy that it's not a balanced budget, no. Um but as you all know, I. We all budget very conservatively on revenue, because that would be celine. To overstate, um the, there's a lot of money in this budget for snow removal and. We all know that could go the other way, but I think that after last year. Um we increased some of those budget line items to try to be better prepared. Uh and not have such a busted snow removal budget. So, you know, there's still, you know, there's a lot of opportunity in there to um. I think to not use a lot of fund balance, but at the moment, I think this is the most realistic operating budget that we can have. Um unless you have any questions for me.
Council members?
So it's not, it's not action, it's strictly informational tonight, thank you.
Thank you so much. Be safe. So be careful that new hip.
Oh, I'm getting better, no, no cane this week.
Nice. Thank you, thank you everyone for coming, um leaving a turn.
Yeah, so that was the pool, they were dropping off the money, I put in the vault.